It is 6:00 PM and this is a common council meeting. I just want to remind everybody to turn on your mics and speak into your microphones because I'm sure a lot of people are going to be listening. All other persons are present. Our next item is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on October 15th. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Austin. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Item four is consider the appointment of a regular member to the Water and Light Commission for a term expiring October 1st, 2028. See attachment two.
I'd like to nominate John Bergen.
Thank you. We have a motion for John Bergen. Are there, or, I'm sorry, a nomination. Is there any other nominations? Guess we'd be looking for a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Mr. Ray, I won't beat ya. Seconded by Veneman. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero Nays, and one abstention. Item six is consider a resolution that the City of Wisconsin ramp has be exempted from the payment of any county library tax as provided in section 43.64, parent two, parent B of the Wisconsin statutes. And this is a yearly resolution we adopt. If you have any questions, Tim's here, probably can answer, and Catherine's hiding out in the back.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So I have a motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays, since you're the IT guy over there. Okay, we're on to item seven, which is the second read of an ordinance that requires only one reading of an ordinance before adoption. See attachment four. Mr. Delaney.
He's got a question for you. He's gonna... Okay, so I'm all for this. I was wondering if a change is made at the council, if that should come back then with the change for an approval? And if that should be added to this ordinance?
I guess I'm not sure. So you want to amend this ordinance? Or?
I'm asking what the best practices are. If, say we change a, we like the overall ordinance, but maybe there's a little bit of wording that gets changed at council? If that should come back for, with the changes made to be voted on?
I would, I guess it depends what the change is. If you're not materially changing the ordinance, I would say this would, it's already been before the body once. This would be the second reading, so you could make a minor amendment and have it be passed this evening. Is that, is that the question? I mean, I guess if you're changing it to now there's going to be two readings again, I mean, I think, I mean, I guess I don't know what the, I mean...
Correct, and future ordinances. Couple of months ago, there was some ordinances brought by Kyle Kearns, and we removed the word trucks from that ordinance. And when it came back for the second reading, we still had to vote on taking out trucks, but we never saw it again after that to make sure that that trucks was removed.
Well, right, I guess that would have been considered a kind of the minor, a minor amendment, and the amendment was actually directed at the first reading. Everyone kind of knew that, okay, we're removing trucks, but then it had to come back for the second reading, right? So then that was the second reading. I mean, it's more about the introduction of something, you know, new. I would say that if the council, if it's pretty much the same ordinance with a minor change, that then, you know, that that, but I guess, but once, if you pass this ordinance, then it's only one ordinance, right? Okay, so you're, so you're saying that if you only have one time to consider it, and it's before the body, and then you're making all of these changes, to what extent does that get material where you, it's really not the same ordinance anymore? Well, I mean, you're basically saying it just needs one, you know, before the body, and again, I, not knowing really what, if it's a material change or not, I guess if you want to be more specific in this ordinance and basically say that any, any change to an ordinance that's, that's introduced in, in writing, that that then has to come back for really a first reading of the amended ordinance. I don't think that's, I mean, generally, the practice has been if there's been a kind of minor changes, that then those have not had to come back, and, you know, doesn't affect the first or second reading. But, I mean, I guess if you are, if you want that to come back to make sure that that doesn't happen, then I think that should, could be addressed in this ordinance. Or if you don't, I would say the same thing. So, the other part is that the ordinances that you're considering a little later, even if you pass this ordinance, those would require two, because this ordinance isn't going to be effective until it's published and so on. So that's not going to be in time for the two ordinances that you're considering tonight, the ATV ordinance and the changes to the fire code. I think those are the only two. There might be a parking ordinance in here, but, yeah, parking and traffic generally only require one reading. So I would, I guess I would defer to you all to determine to what extent, you know, what this means then if it's, if it's one reading and you can, you can amend it. I mean, it's mostly about letting, obviously letting the public know that this is an item that's on the agenda, and there's a new ordinance or a revised ordinance, and it's hopefully, you know, distributed to the public, and, you know, minor amendments, they can, they're here, they can speak to the, or, you know, they can learn about them, and you can deliberate about them, but if it changes the, materially the ordinance, then I would say it probably should come back. But, you know, to what degree that is and what, what those words are, or what material means.
Okay, so I would think that any change should come back so that the council can look it over and approve it, and what is written then is approved and put in. I think that would help the process. I could see mistakes being made where somebody forgot to change it, or, I mean, there could be intentional mistakes made as well, where the council doesn't know what they're talking about, but one other person does. So I feel that way a lot. So, so, I'll, how about, I'll make a motion, maybe if my thing works. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this, but amend it, to add that if an ordinance is changed in any way, it will be brought back a second time with those changes.
We've got a, we've got a motion by Delaney, seconded by Zachar. Go ahead, Jay.
Yes, I'll, I'll speak to what Patrick said. I think that almost defeats the point of getting ready to the second reading, and as a council, we need to reserve the right to not vote on things instead of always having to vote in the affirmative to move things forward. So if something in ordinance comes forward, and these are obviously worked through on legislative, and Sue sends out copies, and we know what's on there. I mean, we don't pass them willy-nilly anyways. I think the one reading is appropriate, and if you don't like the ordinance, then you don't vote on it. I think the one reading really helps us get away from the old process of everything being slow, everything taking two readings, oh, it was amended, there's word change, we'll bring it back next month. Really, if you don't like it, don't vote on it. And if it's a simple word, like you mentioned trucks in one of the ordinances, if it's a striking of the word, I can see that happening on the council floor. I mean, they, they do this stuff in larger versions of our government all the time, whether it's writing bills on napkins or striking things at the governor's desk. I think, I think we can work with that, and really, having the ability to take an ordinance and read it once will help us get more done, whether it's changing ordinances we already have, or like tonight, we're looking at enacting a new one. We can just move forward instead of staying in the same business. So I think making it have to come back is just going to essentially do what we were already doing, where we meet once a month to do this, and we read it, but if we don't read it and it's just coming back, it's kind of the same thing. It gives us all an opportunity to argue about it again and shift opinions versus, we need to, I think we need to vote on these things and move forward and work on the next issue for Fates on the City.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance with the amendment to include that if any changes are being made, that it needs to come back to the next council meeting. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried five A's, three Nays. Okay, I guess real quickly, too, just kind of a housekeeping item, is that in November, our council meeting's on the 21st. Is that good with everybody on the short Thanksgiving week? And if not, it's a greater discussion because our budget meeting, public hearings that Thursday before, so that would have to change things. Just want to make sure we're going to have a quorum that night. If anybody sees any issues? All right, don't see any. We'll meet on the 21st then. On the item eight is consider for adoption, the action of the Plan Commission at its meeting held on October, sorry, on August 31st. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on August 31st in the council chambers. We have a list of members within the clerk's office, a quorum of those were present, as well as others in the audience, again, which are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one is the approval of the report from August 7th, 2023. That motion, there was a motion made by Daven to approve the report from August 7th, seconded by Gudrow. That motion carried five zero. Item two was a request from Walter and Carol Proll for a certified survey map to create four recorded lots at 540 Daly Avenue and three unaddressed parcels, and to dedicate right-of-way on Daly Avenue. Staff provided a summary. There was a motion by Kubashak to approve the request for the certified survey map, and a second by Gudrow. That motion carried five zero. Item three was a request from Scott Domke for a special exception to exceed the floor area of the attached garage maximum within the R2 district at 1021 Cliff Street. Staff provided a summary. There was some discussion amongst the members. There was a motion made by Blazer to approve the request for the special exception, subject to two conditions outlined within the staff report. There was a second by Maruets. That motion carried five zero. Item four was a request from Hellron Brothers, LLP, for site plan and architectural review to construct an industrial building addition at 611 25th Avenue North. Again, there was discussion amongst the commission and staff. A motion was ultimately made by Daven to approve the request with the removal of condition five in the staff report, subject to the additional conditions. There was a second by Gudrow. That motion carried five zero. Item five was adjournment, motion by Maruets to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Kubashak. That motion carried five zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:28 PM. With that, I submit that for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your wishes on the Plan Commission?
Austin will approve.
I have a motion by Austin, seconded by Bemke. Mr. Rayo.
I'd like to hold out item three.
With the addition of item three being held out, everyone, everybody good at that? Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve the balance of that report. No further questions, please cast your ballots. He voted a. Right. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Mr. Rayo, item three.
Thank you, Your Honor. Basically, he just held this out to vote no, but also that, I think if you look at number two, the, what had to be done before it could be, be considered, I guess, is that the driveway had been done ahead of time without the permit being acquired, as I read this anyway, and that's, I guess, if I looked at it before this meeting took place, it's what I assumed it may have done. So I just hold that out to vote no. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
I think we have a motion by Austin, seconded by Katna. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one Nay. Run to item nine, consider for adoption, the action of the standing committee of the council. We do have a request to move the legislative committee up to the top. Does anybody have a problem with that? That we take legislative first and then continue on with the rest of the agenda? Any complaints? Comments? All right, luck you guys. All right, do we can take up legislative committee meeting held on September 5th? Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Legislative committee met Tuesday, September 5th. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two was consider for adoption, an ordinance to allow all, all utility vehicles and all terrain vehicles to operate on city streets other than state highways. There was a motion by Zachar, seconded by Bemke, to approve the ordinance as presented, with the addition of requiring signal lights on all ATVs and UTVs. Motion carried two zero with Rayo voting in the negative. Item number three, consider adoption of an ordinance amending sections of chapter 18, the fire code. There was a motion by Rayo, seconded by Bemke, to approve the ordinance as presented. Motion carried three zero. Item number four was discuss date and time for trick-or-treat in the city for 2023 and possibly future years. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Zachar, to have trick-or-treat in the city beyond the Saturday before October 31st or on October 31st, if it is a Saturday, if it is a Saturday each year. Motion carried two to one, with Rayo voting in the negative. Item five was motion to adjourn, motion made by Bemke, seconded by Zachar to adjourn. Motion carried three zero, meeting adjourned at 5:58. With that, I'll submit for approval, but I would like to hold out item number two.
I'd like to hold out four.
Two, two and four, yeah. Katna, four.
I'd like to hold out three.
Okay. That kind of means we'll just take each item individually. All right, let's tackle the big one first. So item two is consider adoption for the ordinance of the all-terrain vehicles and utrane vehicles. Mr. Katna requests, I guess his, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to start this off with a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution for a binding referendum on the ATV/UTV ordinance as originally drafted for the spring 2024 general election. So that would be the original drafted ordinance without the signal lights, et cetera. The reason it would be the spring 2024 election and not this November is that the, the state says that the filed ballot measure with the proper official in charge of preparing ballots for the election be filed no later than 70 days prior to the election at which the measure appears on the ballot. This is 70 days prior to election. So of course, we don't meet that standard for the fall general election, so it would be spring. I also think that gives a lot of time for everybody who's so passionate, one way or another, on this in the community, to speak to their neighbors, spread the word, spread their message, educate those about ATV/UTV, like you have us in the community, and those who are against, you know, can talk to them about that, and we can have the citizens decide on this through a referendum. So that's, that's the motion I'll put on the floor. I think this is the proper way to address this item, and I'll leave the rest open for discussion.
I just need to do a clarification here. You said you wanted this to go on the, in your motion, you said you wanted it for the general election, which the general election is typically in November. Did you mean the spring election of 2024?
General spring election, correct. Well, I mean...
Yeah, spring election, okay.
It says, it says in certain places that it's, I think by general, they mean there's more on the ballot than just specifically, but, okay, well, the spring 2024 election, which will have lots of stuff on it besides...
Any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I just want to, I agree with Mr. Katna. I think this should be decided by the public. I have mixed feelings on this motion, and I think it should go to a referendum. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Zach.
I just want to say that I agree with taking the signals off because of the state, the way it's set up. Other vehicles are allowed to not have signals on their vehicles, but I would put it on record to say, I think, in 2023, we have enough technology to be able to put blinkers on all of our vehicles, including old motorcycles and UTVs and everything else. And if we're going to have more on the streets, we should have more safety mechanisms in place. So I do believe that the signals should go on, but if the state isn't saying it, then it's going to be hard for us to say it and be able to be in the same boat as everybody else. So maybe if somebody at the state level's listening, they'll take it into account. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Rayo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I don't necessarily agree with this, but it's, when we go to the, if this passes, and I think it will, is there intent then of the, of the city, one way or the other, weighing in on pros and cons, or to be a spokesman for one or the other? Just to make, just to clarify it for now.
I think there's been done on this up to this point. The original ordinance is written. As far as the spokesperson, I don't think we really need to be a spokesperson for any of our ordinances. If they have questions on them, they can be answered. But this is really what's in the motion. It's a referendum. If, we'll publish the draft ordinance, I would think, on the website, so people can refer to it, and that'll answer questions that have came up throughout this entire process that we've been here for, such as what's the requirements of age, license, insurance. So all that is in that original draft ordinance. So really, we'll let the people decide on whether they want to move forward and do that, or they don't. And if we feel questions as alderpersons or elected officials in the meantime, we do as, as we have been already on this issue, I would say.
Well, I think our, oh, position that we had taken lends to the public then, though, would be our individual position, not a position of what the city is, if there's not one. So if you say I agree with it, and agree, that you agree with somebody that may call you up, approach you on the street, that that is, that's not going to be, wouldn't be taken as an endorsement by the city, that the city agrees with it.
And I think that's obvious, because you're going to a referendum. You know, if you're going to make a decision, then you make a decision, but, but you're speaking as a city council, saying that we're not going to make this decision, we've got to let the citizens make that decision. So that's an individual thing.
If I may, Mayor, just add that, just add that, I guess everybody probably has their mind made up on this, or what to do with this, this part of it, anyway, tonight. I guess that's fine. I'd just say before you push your button, maybe think about it one more time. I'm going to vote no.
All right, any additional discussion on it? Let's see where that vote lands. So please cast your ballots. So that motion carried six A's, two Nays, so it'll go to a spring referendum. I guess if you want to sneak out, this is a time, unfortunately, to sneak out. Okay, we can move on to item number three, consider for adoption of an ordinance amending section 18 of the fire code. Was that Mr. Austin, I think, held it out?
Yeah, and I'll ask the chief specifically land clearing permits and the striking of that. Can you explain your position on that and why you struck it? Absolutely. Probably the last three land clearing permits we've gotten have all ended up the same way. They start burning, two hours in, they leave, and leave the fire continuing to be burning unattended. These are probably one of the biggest complaints we get in the city, is these land clearing permits. And to me, what is the need of it? We've got a compo site now. Take your stuff to the compo site. That's why it's there. And we avoid the hassles of the neighbors around there, and we avoid the hassles of unintended emergency vehicles being sent out to calls when we're busy as enough and they're not available for 911 calls. And so that's the reason why we struck the land clear. It's been the biggest nuisance we've had in the last five years. And I can understand that, but at the same time, you're talking about, you know, city residents or property owners having to literally truck trees and material like that off their property, which comes at a significant cost. There might be some bad apples, but all in all, the permit is spelled out, what the regulations are, and, and what you're supposed to do and how you're supposed to do it right. So for me, I have a hard time swallowing just striking the land clearing permit, and I'll be voting no to that aspect in this new ordinance.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Mr. Delaney?
There was a lot of changes that were made on this, and some of it was not exactly clear from reading this and also reading the old chapter 18, as well as the additional state statutes that were on there. I'll make a motion to table this, send it back to committee, and go over this once again. I do have a problem with the campfires shall not be permitted from midnight to 7:00 a.m. stopping campfires in the summer, when most people have their campfires. It doesn't get dark until 9:30, and then you're getting the campfire stopped, what, two and a half hours later. So, that part I don't like. And there's some other parts. Rather just make a motion to table it, and then we can discuss it outside of council.
So, a motion by Delaney, seconded by Zachary to table this item?
Yes, go ahead. You're going to send it back to committee, what specifically you want us to look at? I mean, just review the whole thing again, or what? I think, I don't, I think Sue probably pulled that midnight out of probably some other ordinances from other towns or cities, but I'll tell you, nothing good happens after midnight. And when we get our burning complaints, and it's diapers, and tires, and a whole side of a shed sitting on top of a campfire, it usually happens after midnight. And that was one of the reasons why I think that's been added into there. When everybody goes to sleep, that's when everybody grabs their garbage and throws it on fire, because they're hoping nobody sees it. And this last year, we probably went to at least 20 fires that were garbage on the fire, and some of them are repeat offenders.
Mr. Katnau.
Thank you. I'm not in favor of sending this item back to committee, because it's already been at committee. So, clearly, the chief has his opinions on why it should stay as is. I think we should vote on it as is tonight, which I would be voting no. I mean, I get what you're saying, chief, but I don't think we should be policing fires after midnight and different things like that. So, this, if it's going to come back to committee cleaned up, I'm not pointing out the specific ways, but I think the community, the committee hasn't changed. They've already seen it this way. I just don't get the point in sending it back. I just vote against it today.
No motion, seconded, Mr. Bemke.
I just have a question for the chief. Is there, is there, would it be a problem if this went back? I mean, is this a one-month or two-month delay, depending upon how the rest of this goes, if it went back for discussion?
Absolutely not. That's why I asked, what points do you want us to discuss or look at? I mean, you want us just to revamp the whole thing? I mean, there's a, you know, the reason this thing has a lot of clean, or a lot of changes in it, is it hasn't been looked at, and all the time I've been here, 18 years, it's never been looked at. Number one. Number two is, we probably get, in a week's time, on average, six to 10 calls of people complaining because somebody's burning next to them. Sometimes it's campfires, a lot of times it's, again, when it gets dark, then on go all the stuff that shouldn't be there. So, I think there's, there's probably more people calling and complaining about it than there is that, you know, is actually doing it proper.
Good. Mr. Benman.
Yeah, I, I'm okay if we vote for it tonight, or send it back. If you send it back, I, I'm concerned about number seven, land clearing. I had a couple of calls today, actually, about that. And I think, in general, the public is fairly responsible. They're clearing land for a reason, and I think there's a number of things. I would vote no on it tonight, but if it can, if it needs, I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to it being sent back to be cleaned up, but if, as it stands like it is right now, I would vote no.
So, we have a motion, seconded, though, to send it back to committee. That'd be our first motion. Any further discussion? Okay, let's, please cast your ballots. Hmm. Aye. I'm, I'm going to vote aye to send it back to committee for that discussion, because I think there's good parts in here and there's bad parts. I've got neighbors that like to burn after 12 and have legitimate, good campfires. And no, not you, Bemke. And so, I think it's worth taking a look, and if, and as for anything specific, I think that's kind of what the committee should talk about, are those changes, and then have that ordinance come forward. So, there may not be a specific thing on it right now. Okay, that motion carries five As, four Nays. We're on to item four, which is discuss the date and time for trick-or-treating in the city for 2023 and possible future years. Was that you, Mr. Bemke, or, or Mr. Katnau? Okay.
So, I'll start this off. I'm going to make a motion that trick-or-treating be on.
I think I had a request to speak.
He did have number one first, but usually I always.
I thought I pulled it out, so I guess.
Yeah, I usually always.
Okay.
Go to the person that held it out first. Budget.
All right, well, I'll sort of, I want to make a motion that trick-or-treating be on Halloween, five to seven, as it traditionally has been, and that it is that way until 2025, and we can take a look again. I'm happy to amend that if you just want to do one more year, but I think this is my sixth year as an older person, fifth year as an older person, and it's strange to me that this comes back every year. Everybody in town knows trick-or-treating is in Rapids, five to seven. The older folks know it. People who don't pay attention to these meetings know it. The kids know it. I don't know how many people have kids or had kids, but they know when you get out of school, you're going trick-or-treating. And we all had that when we lived here growing up, and we're going to take that from them and move it to a Saturday. If you go and look at the community events that go on on these Saturdays surrounding Halloween in general, there's a plethora of trunk or treats, different haunted house things. I just saw another one from ODC. So, there's tons of activities, and really, we're going to take the tradition of trick-or-treating and try to blend it in those. It's, it's two hours. I'd hate for these kids to get out of school and it be the day of Halloween, the excitement of Halloween, and have to take them home, because it's a weekday, and they don't get to go out in their costumes and trick-or-treat. And to be honest, I don't even know if, if we move forward or switching it to a Saturday, how many people would know to even turn on their lights that Saturday or that day? Like, this is the tradition of Wisconsin Rapids. There's people that come here from other communities to do this. I think it should stay this way, always, and I've never heard anybody say anything otherwise. I understand this came from a call, but, I mean, this is just tradition. I think a lot of people don't even know we're talking about this, and will be shocked if we changed it. So, the motion will be to keep trick-or-treating on Halloween, five to seven, for, until 2025.
All right, Mr. Bemke.
So, so this did come from a call, and I've had the same call for the last two years from the same person. I think her angle was, is little kids at home, get them home from school, get them ready to go trick-or-treating, get them out trick-or-treating, get them home, and then have to get them up in the morning for school the next day. I mean, that's where she was coming from. So, that's why that came back. I think we had some discussion about this last year, decided it came in a little bit late. So, again, probably in August, she reached out, and here we are. So, thank you.
Mr. Delie.
Why don't we make this permanent? I mean, we are the legislative body. Why are we just going to 2025? If you want to change it in the future, you could always change it in the future.
Really, it's about moving it forward on the floor of eight of us. So, making anything permanent makes it more complicated, so I figure three years. But I can't take a straw pull here on who would be in favor of forever, so I'll stick with the three years in the motion.
Forever's only good till next year, new council.
Right. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, right?
Or, or till next year.
Because those three years would be figured out, and then it would come back, and I would hope whoever's on council at that time would make it permanent, but we'll leave it up to them. Maybe we could have another COVID, who knows?
Yeah, we're done with that. I have to bang my gavel, hold on. Okay, we got a motion, seconded.
Can I amend it to be permanent? I mean, it is a tradition that's gone on forever in Wisconsin. Everybody knows 4th of July fireworks happen on 4th of July, Halloween, trick-or-treating happens on Halloween. It just makes sense.
People asking until next year is brought out, or a year after. But the body can bring it up every year. Yeah. So, let's, if you can go back. So, I guess I'm looking for unanimous consent to amend the motion. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Yes? Yeah? Yeah, everyone good? Okay. Any questions or comments? They're voting on that trick-or-treating will be on October 31st going forward, from five to seven, until the next change.
This makes it so it doesn't have to come back for approval every year, I guess, I would say. Chief, you want to? Oh, no, okay. I thought you were going like this. But, yeah, I mean, I've been on, I've spent time on council here, and every year, it's strange to me, being a regular citizen and a councilperson, that this is something that's discussed every year. And I think this just puts it on the books, so everybody knows what it is, because I'll tell you, this is what everybody thinks it is. Like, this is what the people handing out candy think it is. So, you just put it on the books as this is what it is, or you can, when the paper calls, asks what time it is, that's what time it is, unless someone from council puts in a referral to change it.
I was going to say, when I was clerk, they, the citizens will call anyways to find out when we're having trick-or-treating every year, so they don't know. But anyways, we've got a motion, seconded, on the floor. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Okay. Let's go back to the top of the item nine, which is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on September 5th. Mr. Bemke. Sorry, Mr. Zachary.
Thank you. Report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting on September 5th, 2023. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Item one, call to order, Chairperson Zachary called the meeting to order at 4:01 p.m. Item two, consider for approval the usage of park outlay money to fund the mead park plans not to exceed $200,000. It was moved by Venman, seconded by Bemke to approve, and motion carried three to zero. Item three, consider for, consider a request from Pacific Oil LLC, Pinkinder S. Sala agent for retail Class A intoxicating liquor license and a retail Class A fermented malt beverages license for the premises located at 3660 8th Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venman to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider a request from Klaasah Oil LLC, Pinkinder S. Sala agent for retail Class A intoxicating liquor license and retail Class A fermented malt beverage license for the premises located at 24118 8th Street South, I'm sorry, 2411 8th Street South. It was moved by Venman, seconded by Bemke to approve, motion carried three to zero. Item five, update on a request from the Community Development Department to apply for a 2024 Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of $25,000 to create a downtown development master plan. Community Development Director Kyle Kearns gave an update on the request from the Community Development to apply for the 2024 Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of $25,000 to create a downtown development master plan. No action was taken on this item. Item six, budget discussion. The budget was discussed, no action was taken on this item. Item seven, audit of the bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary to approve, check numbers 18197 to 18606, motion carried three to zero. Item eight, set next meeting date. Next regular committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, at 4:00 p.m. Item nine is adjournment. It was moved by Venman, seconded by Bemke to adjourn, motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 4:31 p.m. With that, I submit these minutes for approval.
You got your motion?
It was not a motion, but now I will make it a motion.
Sometimes I'm not sure. So, a motion by Zachary, seconded by Katnau. Any discussion on the rest of the report? I'm Mr. Austin.
I think they'll hold out item five.
Item number five, everyone good with that? Okay. Any other items? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots on the balance of the report, holding out item number five. Oh, okay. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Mr. Austin, item five.
Kyle, were you looking for a motion to move forward with this grant, or is this just an update?
This was just an update to let you know that the seed committee did approve the grant. However, it's not technically fully approved until the county board acts in November on their budget. So, I indicated that in the meantime, we could work on an RFP that could be released thereafter and brought back to council for approval, and a future decision made to utilize the TIF dollars for the downtown TIF to fund the remainder of the master plan.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item five.
Do you, do you want a motion, or to just place it on file, or are you good with no motion? To approve it as presented?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Zachary, seconded it. Any other questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Run to item B, the Public Works Committee. Mr. Reel.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, September 7th, 2023, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members were present, others attending are listed below. Meaning, item one, a meeting was called to order. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity reports. Reports were reviewed. Item three, review and consider an ordinance adding parking on both sides of Baker Street between 5th Street North and 8th and Eighth Street North. There's a motion and a second by Pollock to approve changing the ordinance, allowing parking on both sides of Baker Street between Fifth Street North and Eighth Street North. The motion carried, was Pollock voted, voting against. Just in there, I, Your Honor, unless there was a mistake, I mean, I believe there was a mistake here, is that, I also voted no on that too, so the motion failed one to two. Three. Item four.
So what, is that, so that failed, that motion?
Failed.
Okay. Thanks.
Review and consider ordinance changes for the restricted parking on Prospect Street and Eleventh Street North at Emmanuel Lutheran School. Motion by Rehm, seconded by Pollock to approve the draft ordinance as presented. Revising parking restrictions adjacent to Emmanuel Lutheran School, the motion carried three to zero. Item five, review and consider approving the state municipal agreement for carbon reduction program project for Wisconsin Rapids Rail Crossing Optimization, project number six nine 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 dash one one dash eight six. There's a motion by Austin, seconded by Rehm, to approve the state municipal agreement for carbon reduction program project for Wisconsin Rapids Rail Crossing Optimization. And motion carried three to zero. Item six, discuss compost site operations and expectations. There's a motion by Rehm, seconded by Pollock, to retain approximately one thousand to three thousand cubic yards of compost to be screened and made available for compost site users, and send out requests for proposal from local vendors to sell the remaining quantity. Motion carried three to zero. Item seven, consider a preliminary resolution for public work improvements on Wiley Street between Tenth Street North and Twelfth Street North, proposed for construction in two thousand twenty-four. There's a motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to approve the preliminary resolution for public improvements for Wiley Street from Tenth Street North to Twelfth Street North, motion carried three to zero. Item eight, review eligible projects for the Wisconsin DOT's S T P applications, and they were reviewed. Item nine, review and consider amendment number three to M S A's service contract for the signal infrastructure upgrades for intersections along West River View Expressway at Chase Street, West Grand Avenue, and High Street. The motion is seconded by, motion by Austin, seconded by Rehm, to approve amendment number three to M S A's service contract for the single, signal infrastructure upgrades for intersections along West River View Expressway, Chase Street, West Grand Avenue, and High Street, that motion carried three to zero. Item ten was to review the referral list, the list was reviewed. Item eleven was to set the next meeting date, the next meeting would be on Thursday, October fifth, at five P M. Item twelve was adjournment, there was motion and a second to adjourn at five fifty-four P M. That motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I'll move for adoption of that report.
So Mr. Pollock has a motion on the floor, or you've got, Dennis, you have your motion button pushed? If you want to remove his, no, you're good.
Okay.
So if you want to remove his motion. And then Mr. Rehm made a motion to adopt the report. And if you could hit your motion button, Mr. Rehm. And then, is there a second? Yeah, it's seconded by Mr. Pollock. Uh, Mr. Austin. Okay, you're fine, you're good.
I'd like to hold out item three.
Item three. Everyone good with that, I would assume, okay? And Mr. Delaney?
I'd just like to talk about number nine, is that all right?
Sure.
Discuss that, okay, so M S A had sent over a, an additional forty-four thousand five hundred and eleven dollars to be paid to them. I think the reasons that were given at the meeting were kind of insub, not really great. Instead of using a big word, I'll say that. So, so. But the good part is, is that we only paid ten percent of it, because it's a ninety, ninety, ten split. I mean, but this money does come from somewhere, it doesn't just appear out of nowhere. Somebody, somewhere is paying ninety percent of this additional cost. And to me, I just, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could build into our contracts that there is maybe only a five percent overage allowed, or a ten percent overage allowed, if that is a way that we can do this, so that we don't go back into these projects and continuously add on for fees. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the balance of the report with Mr. Austin holding out item three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's, uh, Mr. Austin, item three.
Yeah, this one leaves me really scratching my head why we're even talking about this. It was over a year ago that this ordinance was approved to add parking on both sides of Baker from Fifth to Eighth. And apparently, the ordinance was left out of a packet, and now all of a sudden, it's like we're starting from scratch. So to me, this ordinance should be in place, and I'm gonna make the motion to add the ordinance for parking on both sides of Baker Street between Fifth and Eighth Street North.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt an ordinance that allows parking on Baker Street between Fifth Street and Eighth Street. Is that the ordinance that's in the packet?
It should be the same ordinance, yeah.
Okay. So it adopted the ordinance as presented?
Yeah, this ordinance was approved over a year ago, and here it is in front of us again.
So the ordinance never was drafted, Ryan? I know that the vote was to, it should have been to draft the ordinance, so that you could approve the ordinance, but the ordinance, that was, the motion was never made to draft the ordinance, and that's why we're now coming back, because the last meeting, the motion was to draft the ordinance and bring it back. So this is the first time you're actually seeing the ordinance.
There seems to be confusion then, because it sounds, it sounded to me like in the Public Works meeting that this wasn't followed through on, because we had some paint shortages. So it was on the schedule to actually add the parking. And, and now we're saying that's not the case, so I guess, which, which is?
But I think no matter what, we're at the point where we've got an ordinance in front of us, and it's been moved and now seconded also to adopt the ordinance as it is presented. Mr. Katna.
Thank you. I understand Mr. Austin's point completely with what's went on in regards to last year, when I wasn't here, and then for this to have to come back when action was already taken. However, I don't find this area as the ideal place for parking, if we're talking about parking in the city. I mean, you can just drive down Baker, and you can see that if there, if cars parked on the side, it would probably get crazier than it is. And I can't imagine what that would look like in the winter with the hill and such, so. I'm not in favor of this, I've heard from some residents in my district, they're not in favor of this, and I, I wasn't here last year to speak up on that, but I will be voting against this.
Mr. Delaney.
I'm under the same impression as Mr. Austin, that last year we had voted on this, and it should have been passed. Somehow there's a flaw in our system that we have. And I, I don't know exactly where that flaw is, and I really don't know how to correct it without knowing what exactly the process is. So when we vote on something as a council, it should be moved forward. Like, I don't understand how we voted on something. Everybody thought that it was done, I'm sure the residents that watched it that night thought that it was done. And then, over a year later, we're back here and we're deciding if we should do it or not. I, I don't understand that. Obviously, there's something, something wrong with the way we do business. I'd really like to get to the, to the bottom of that and figure out how to fix the problem, because there is a problem here.
Well, I'd like to make a few comments. I, it's my understanding that what would hap, what happened was, at Public Works, there was not an ordinance for Public Works to consider. The motion was simply to have the parking, I guess, right? There was no ordinance prepared for council, so the council did not pass any ordinance, because there was nothing in writing in front of them, and as you have pointed out, you, you want to see things in writing, and if there are any changes, they need to, you know, be considered, so. So there never was an ordinance, there never was anything pub, it wasn't published. So the ordinance, even though it should, you know, you voted on it, it never was effective. So that's why it's coming back, you have it in ordinance form in front of you right now, and we apologize that it was missed, out of all the ordinances that we do, we, I guess we missed one. I don't think it's a, a problem, a continual problem. I guess, I think this is one of the few times, I think, that it's happened. So I guess that's, that's where it's at.
Good.
So a few months ago, we created a rule that was voted on, that we get all materials, at least two business days, before any committee meetings or council meetings. And that was passed through. Has that, has anything happened on that? Is there more that needs to be done on that rule?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean, is there more that needs to be done with the rule? I mean, it's a policy that you passed, so.
Correct, but does it have to be in writing and then voted on again by the, by the council?
No, I don't, I don't believe so, no. Are you saying that then, there's something, a violation of that rule?
No, 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 no. I'm just asking, see, because I don't, like this got missed. I'm wondering where our checks and balances are, that a few months ago, we came up with that rule, it never came back. Who knows, it could have went off into outer space, nobody knows.
Well, it, it's contained in the minutes of your, of your meeting, in terms of that policy, right? So I guess that's the memorialization of that, it wasn't an ordinance, you know, so that needed to be in writing and needed to be published. It was a, it was a policy, if I recall correctly, I guess I'm, so. Just the same as trick-or-treating, I don't know. I mean, I guess the clerk could put together a document that says, you know, trick-or-treating, and this was the policy. It probably would be a good, good idea to maybe do that and keep track of those things, but generally, it's contained in the minutes of the, of the meetings.
So nothing more has to be done with that?
No.
And is there any way that we could follow up on old business like this? So that it doesn't get skipped, or set aside, or I don't know exactly what happened, but in my mind, this, to me, this happened, it's fresh, like it just happened yesterday. I know it happened over a year ago, I remember everything that happened that day, and we voted on it, I'm pretty sure Tom voted against it, but that's normal, so. But it did pass, I mean, is there any, any way?
Right, but you did not have an ordinance in front of you, it appears, to, to vote on, and, and I, I'll take responsibility, I guess, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure what, I mean, I think generally, especially with Public Works, there's these ordinances, usually Joe will send them to me to review, or we, Jennifer, we might catch something. I mean, yeah, we're, I guess, doing the best we can, and we apologize for missing this ordinance and not having it in writing at the time of council. At least that's, to our understanding, that's what happened, we can't find that it was actually ever drafted and put before, and before the council.
But I also think that it's on staff, it's on the council itself, you know, there has to be some ownership there by everybody, you know, on what you're voting on and taking that responsibility, so it could be spread around, it doesn't, I can't, this is the last, the only time I remember this really happening, where it was kind of just totally missed. Thankfully, it was just a parking ordinance. But ironically, I remember talking to Joe Ixted at length about this, because for some reason in my mind, I thought this was an ordinance in the past, because I was gonna veto it. And so I was talking to Joe about, because I was concerned about the curve of the hill, is there enough visibility there? You know, if traffic patterns change downtown with the new jail, and so I, I I also assumed that it was an ordinance and it already passed, because Joe and I met several, a few times to discuss whether or not I was gonna veto this ordinance. So it's just somehow slipped through the cracks. Hi, Mr. Katna.
Actually, that's, speaking of Joe, that's, I wanted to bring you in here to have your thoughts on parking in that area. You probably spoke on it last year, I think it would be relevant to the public and myself, if you speak on it again this year, and give your thoughts of if that's a proper area to park, safety, changes in traffic flow, et cetera.
Certainly. As I shared at the committee meeting on this item, I guess it would have been two months ago, that, you know, since the year went by, essentially, where the ordinance apparently had not been in place, you know, we hadn't received, even initially, we had never received any complaints or calls on the topic. But nevertheless, it is something that can be painted. I don't see any real issues with allowing the parking there. Overall, I don't think there's gonna be a huge parking demand regardless. There will be the bike lanes that would be painted as a continuation along Baker Street through this stretch. It is, it's tight through there to fit everything, but we believe that we can still get the two parking lanes, travel lanes, and bike lanes within that three-block stretch.
You're the engineer, so it's what you say, but I can't picture it in my head, and I, I know people who live in my district can't either. It just, Baker, I believe the speed limit, uh, limit is twenty-five miles an hour, but we've put the speed wagon over there multiple times, people aren't going that, it's a hill. I, I don't know. Thank you for answering that.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it came from one resident, and that's the V R B O building, or it wasn't a full-time resident, it was the owner of that, that converted that house into that vacation rental. And they are the ones that requested the additional parking on street?
Um, I, I don't know that personally, I didn't, I didn't talk with them, but that's, that's what I've, what I've heard.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried five to three. Okay, we are on to item C, which is a Human Resource Committee meeting held on September fourteenth. That's Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resources met September, Thursday, September fourteenth. Item one, meeting was called to order at three thirty P M. Item two, discuss and consider for approval, proposed changes to the pay provisions policy. See attachments, there was a motion by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve the proposed changes to the pay provisions policy, motion carried three to zero. Item three, discuss and consider for approval, a new wage schedule to be effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, contingent upon budget approval, against the attachment, motion by Bemke, seconded by Katna, to approve. Motion by Benke, seconded by Katna, to approve the new wage schedule to be effective January 1st, 2024, contingent upon budget approval. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, discuss and consider for approval, making permanent the current trial period of city hall hours of Monday through Thursday, 8 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8 AM to 12 PM. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Benke, to extend the current trial period of city hall hours of Monday through Thursday, 8 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8 AM to 12 PM, for an additional year through September 19th, 2024. Motion carried three to zero. Item five, discuss and consider for approval, approve, approve changes to CDL policy. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Katna, to approve the proposed changes to the CDL policy. Motion carried three to zero. Item six, adjournment, motion by Benke, seconded by Katna, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 5 PM. With that, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve this, but holding out items two and three.
So, we have a motion by Benke to adopt the report, holding out items two and three. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Delaney. Any further discussion on the balance of the report? Okay, seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Mr. Benke?
So, the night we discussed this, this, this new pay provision policy and the wage scale, there was some discussion about some possibility of some other options. I believe, somebody else can probably speak to this, but I believe during the week since we've had this, there were some ideas kicked around and the possibility of having this done and ready to go again. So, there was good discussion. I think there were legitimate concerns and questions, and I, I just ask that this go back to committee again, to be reviewed with the new information that we get.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second? There you go, hit your motion button. Okay. And we have a second by Mr. Veneman. Mr. Delaney?
I just wanted to talk with the other council members that may not have had the hour and a half to watch this. So, they came up with this pay plan. I think overall, the pay plan is okay, but it's kind of unfair, because it does not take into account the years of service that our employees have had here at the city. So, if anybody has some ideas, Mr. Baller came up with a genius idea of if they've served, like they're in jail, if they've been here for 10 years or longer, that they would be moved up one step in the scale. And I think that's a, a great idea. There's also some others. But I'd, I'd like everybody to think about it, how to make it more fair, and pass along any ideas to Jay or Ryan, so that we can make it more fair to the longer-term employees. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Katna?
Thank you. I'll also encourage anybody who wasn't at the meeting to watch it, because there's a lot there and a lot discussed and a lot of information. But essentially, with what we're already doing with the Pay Step program, we're, we're taking on more in wages than we would in the current system we use. So, we're, we're talking money here, and, and the idea is to, you know, award those with more time or at, with the city in their career, or whatever it may be, experience different provisions to allow them different steps in the program that we, or the process that we, we paid a bunch of money to have the study done, and this is what came out of it, and it's been well-vetted. And there's a dollar amount to it. And so, Tim gave us the breakdown for the dollar amount. I think it was over the next five years. And it's, it's already, just with that, if the control point, which is the market rate doesn't change, will be going up 606,000. The market rate will change, so we're looking at more money. I don't know how much more we're going to start getting in taxes. So, we're really, I, I don't disagree with people, awarding people for their time served. But when we're talking with the city in, in a tight budget, and what's went into this and why it is this way, I don't see it. And Tim, are you going to be able to provide the same financials off these new ideas that you provided at the last HR meeting?
Yeah, that's, whatever kind of options are proposed, it's my intent to cost those out.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so, I'm sorry. So, Ryan's been working on trying to figure out and go through everybody and their position, how long they've been in that position, see where they, they fit in that scale. And then, that's what Tim will sit down and cost out and kind of break down the same thing, just to, so you have the multiple different options, you can actually see what it, it really does cost and doesn't cost, just like he had presented before, that really good document. And we just, so we put on the brakes and thought, oh, why don't we just, why don't we do a, a total look at it and then bring it back for HR?
I just think it opens up a Pandora's box with people's time employed with the city, the different positions. We talked specifically in Falls Department, which position are, did they work in for those 10 years? I mean, this is clean. We, we know we need to move into a program like this, and we're going to deliberate it again in committee and bring it back to council. And we need it ready for the budget and to pay people in 2024. I just think we should move forward, like I said at the committee meeting, and all other discussions can happen and, and with changes to that policy in future meetings. But we need to get the policy in place, is my opinion. So, we, we're, we got this paper tonight. Let's talk about the budget and all these different meetings. Until this is figured out, we're not even going to have final numbers. So, I think we need to move forward on this. I'm not in favor of moving it back to committee. I'd like to see it move forward tonight, and then we can add to it later.
So, we have a motion, a second, to refer this back to committee. Is there any further discussions on that motion? Okay, seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's to one N. Mr. Benke, item three?
Item three is, again, I would, I would ask that that be sent back to committee. That is the wage scale. So, I think Tim just said that he can have that ready by our next meeting. So, I would request that that goes, I will make a motion that that goes back to committee.
Thank you. Please. Right, we have a motion by Benke, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion, assuming that it would be the same? Okay, seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, zero N's. We're on to item 10, which is reports of other committees commissioned. Oh, I'm sorry, did I say eight and one, or? Then we're on to item 10, which is information for your reading pleasure. Item 11 is referral to committees.
Actually, and the other committees, can I hold out just for discussion, the Parks and Rec minutes?
You can talk about it. There's really nothing to hold out, but if you want to make a comment on them.
Well, yeah, I was just, if, if, Jake, can you just talk to the city a little, or talk to the listeners about the status of the dog park and when it's opening and such, and also some of the ideas of what we're looking for on the Teske funds?
So, yeah, this morning, 8 o'clock, I believe, the voting stopped for the naming of the dog park. We're still compiling all the numbers to see which name won that. So, that should probably be announced, that's going to be announced the day of the opening. We have not set a date for that yet. I think we have a tentative date of October 11th, but.
When was that?
October 11th. So, the update on Dog Park, so some things to do. We got some sidewalk work to do, but the parking lot was painted, I believe, yesterday. So, things are, I think we're ahead of schedule, so. As far as the Teske fund goes, I've not got the final numbers of what we so far have spent on the Prairie Dog exhibit that unfortunately cannot open this year. We're probably sitting around $220,000 that we have to spend by 2025. So, we're still coming up with different ideas on how to use that money at the zoo.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I also think it's important, Dean, that, you know, with Park and Rec and Finance, now council tonight approving the $200,000 match for the legacy grant, to do the whole recreational area in combination with the school district over at Meat Field. And this next year, that whole West Side recreational area there, it's going to be phenomenal for the, for the people on the West Side to be able to utilize this new space. So, that's going to be nice. We're on to any referrals to committees? Okay, and I think we should point out, as I think Jake did, you do have a schedule for budget meetings. Any questions or concerns, kind of? I guess that, no matter if we have a quorum or not, we'll still meet, and you'll be able to watch the videos of that. But those would be the nights of the meetings. I know there's a lot, so. Somebody have a question, or? Go ahead.
So, essentially, it's every Thursday, starting, I don't know, I'm looking at one side of it.
Yeah, there's Tuesdays and Thursdays in there and.
Okay. So, in the event someone couldn't make it to one of these, which, of course, I think we'll all try to, but if we're not taking any action, do we need the quorum? Or, I, I don't want to open it up, be like, oh, come if you want. I think everybody should be there, but I'm just.
Well, technically, you can make motions in a committee.
Right, so you do need a quorum?
On those, or two?
Well, probably, I guess what you probably do, if you don't have a quorum of a committee of the whole, we can notice it as, in the event there's not a quorum of the council there, that then the Finance and Property Committee, I mean, I, I don't know, if you're just doing discussion, I guess it really doesn't matter, but then it's, maybe it will just be a Finance and Property Committee meeting and go from there. I mean, I don't know how, what Tim, how Tim feels. But we need, you know, it needs to be a noticed meeting, and if you want to have, call a committee of the whole, but you're not going to have a quorum, but then you're not going to be able to have the committee of the whole meeting. So, you're going to have to have.
Language?
Some other reason to meet or have a meeting of finance that probably would be your fallback.
What if it was worded, committee of the whole, and then somewhere there it says, in the event there's not a quorum, it will be held as a Finance and Property Committee meeting?
Yeah, that's what I just, that's what I, I'm suggesting.
I'm, I'm bringing this up, not like I'm going to be the one skipping a bunch of meetings, but I, I just think there's a lot, and I would worry about what we would do on that day, had we not noticed it, right? And then we reschedule, because it's like, oh, well, so-and-so can't come. So, this gives us a, a little backup for every single meeting, if we know someone's not going to come. And maybe we have to note our attendance the day before to know what's going to be what.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you could kind of let the clerk know ahead of time, or as soon as possible, that whether or not you're going to attend or not, or be able to attend, so we can figure out another way. Especially, all the dates are already out there.
We had this last year. I mean, attendance was pretty solid.
Yep.
So, this year, common council, it falls just two days before Thanksgiving? Is that what you were saying before?
Correct.
That's also during deer hunting, right?
Correct.
Why would we have a common council meeting during deer hunting and two days before Thanksgiving? Does anybody else?
I agree. We can wear a blaze orange then, I guess.
Well, we also have two council meetings just before that, the, the week before. Is there any way that we could just make the 15th, combine the committee meetings in with that, and be done on the 15th?
So, so we used to do the budget hearing on the same night as council, and then there was some, some discussion, controversy that, you know, how do you make a change to the budget if there's something that the public may offer? But I, we have, never had anybody at the budget hearing or the, that, that night. So, but, yeah, you would have to, because typically, we have that budget hearing the Thursday before, so unless you did the Tuesday before the budget hearing, but it only gives you two days if you need to make a change, and then do the council meeting on Thursday, that's an option too.
I just don't want them to be on the same night.
Right.
Ever. I mean, that, if that's what we're going to do, but otherwise, I'm open to whatever. But when we used to do it on the same night, I just felt the budget got put aside, or didn't get as much attention as it should have, because there's all the minutes from each committee and everything else.
Yeah, I think we had the chaos one year, when we did have quite a, quite a discussion on the hearing at the council, and then it was, I think we ended up postponing. It was, it was interesting. But, so that's an option, if you have the budget hearing on.
Thursday, the 17th?
The Thursday, hold on. I'm just pulling up my calendar. That's what I'm going to ask, yes, yeah.
The dates are, oh, that's 2022.
Or the week after, too.
I'm sorry about that.
Are these all here?
Yes. So, an option would be to have the budget hearing on the 14th, council on the 16th, or hold, hold the budget hearing on the 16th and have council on the 28th, the week later, other than the holy week.
Read that, so.
So, you could.
Go back to where it says Thursday, November 2nd. Go down from there.
Thursday, November 2nd. So, that would be good.
That's the final budget discussion.
November 9th would be good, if we needed it.
Oh, that's optional.
Yep.
So, why wouldn't we just?
Or do the budget hearing that night, and the 14th have council? Now, I got three different options now. I'm never good with more than one choice.
So, so this, this optional one you put in, Tim, is that because you didn't think we'd finish on the second?
Yeah, that was just there if we wanted additional discussion on the budget, so.
Well, if we're, I, I can see what Patrick's saying. We just move it back then.
So, have the, the public hearing on the 9th? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
November 9th, and then the council, have the council meeting on the 14th instead of the 21st, so kind of bring everything up a week? Or wear a blaze orange to council? Go ahead, Tim.
Just, just, you know.
You've got your 90 days, you got the.
15 days. We have to publish the budget for the public hearing, so just so you're aware of that, prior to the, 15 days ahead of it. So, we'll write, you know, depending on what the, the budget major changes, it's not, it doesn't necessarily have to be the final budget that's published, but just the best estimate that time. But just so you're aware of that, we have to publish that in the paper 15 days prior.
So, what does everyone think? The 9th and the 14th? Or do you want some other option?
So, so you're leaving, so the 9th becomes the 2024 budget here, public hearing?
Correct.
And the optional one is history now, right? By doing that? Okay, so that moves to there. Okay, then, then the budget resolution you.
Which would be at the council meeting, could be on the 14th, the week before, or you wait till the 28th and have a, a late in the month meeting after thing. Tim does not like.
Well, we have to get information, so the tax bills can be processed.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about tax bills by December 15th.
The 28th would be, I think, a little.
Yeah, we don't want to go that late. So, maybe the best option is the, the 9th and the 14th? Jay's good with it. Everybody good?
So, it's.
Tom?
Yeah, but just looking at, it just rang a bell here, minute or two ago, I was talking about the other, this other part, these other dates. Thursday, the 5th of October is, at 5 PM, that's also our scheduled Public Works meeting, if my memory is right now, so.
Good point.
And it's just, it's been going through my mind, I picked, we had this this evening on our desk. Can any more of these be combined in, that there'd been, be less meetings then? I don't mind, I, I don't mind the number of meetings, but it just appears that some of these more could be combined into less meetings. I mean, if they were going to drag all it for hours or something would be one thing, but some of these, it doesn't, I don't think they would, but.
They did.
I was going to say, there's pretty big budgets on, like police and fire are big budgets. But I, when we met, they were actually pretty quick because they weren't, they weren't wild. We met on the library twice. Oh. No, that's only.
Public Works will have to come up with a different meeting, that's all, different time, different day.
So.
So, I mean, leave the, if these days stay, that's.
Kind of adjust from there.
Okay, so November 2nd is still the final budget discussion?
Correct.
Okay, and then what's the night?
Would be the budget, budget, public hearing.
Okay, so what goes between the, so then the 6th is in, you said?
Nope, the 14th would be the council meeting with the budget resolution.
I'm just looking, the first one is the second. And then what, then it goes to, the next one is the 9th?
The 9th, which is going to be the budget public hearing.
Okay, so that'd be, okay, gotcha.
And then the 14th would be the common council meeting with the budget resolution.
But not, so, so forget the 16th.
Cross off the 16th.
Gotcha. That's where I was confused. I confuse easily.
Everyone good? I thought maybe it'd be doing on Tuesday. Is there a court or anything in here? Just thought about the court schedule.
Back to the 16th.
Well, the Thursdays won't be a problem.
Okay.
The council meeting. Yeah, Thursdays aren't a problem, so it would be.
Then maybe we do it on the 16th then. Okay, so we can't do it on the 14th? Or we can do the 16th? You sure? 16th are wide open. Okay, should we do council on the 16th because then the court schedule won't need to change and? Okay. Back at it. We good?
Want to just read them off then, Jennifer, starting from November 2nd?
Sure. You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay, November 2nd is the final budget discussion.
Okay.
November 9th is the public hearing.
Okay.
November 16th is the common council meeting with the budget resolution and then the 21st goes away.
Gotcha. So November 16th, we'll be here till midnight?
No.
I said we'd be here till midnight.
All right, we're on to item 12, which is adjournment. We have a motion by Catna or Delaney, seconded by Zachar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed? That motion carries. Hey, Tom, do you want this?